Hope everybody's Wednesday is going as lovely as our Wednesdays going here. Or my Wednesday is, that's for sure.
Ready? You're doing next Wednesday?
Really good Wednesday. Really, really good Wednesday.
What happened?
Just had a great call with a new host, you know, all that fun stuff to excite you.
Thank you.
Great chat with Zachary on our one-on-one, great chat with Vera, just greatness all around. I hope I can send some of that greatness here through this town hall. I hope you can feel it.
I'm gonna be the problem-focused person here.
Just so you all know, Matthew was originally dubbed the grandma of hospitable or smart B and B, just because I get excited for everything and I'm always so like, yeah, alright, great. Oh, this is awesome. This is wonderful, just like your grandma said.
Yeah. And by the way, we're discovering altogether that you're also a grandpa. I think we're gonna need to have a list at one point of all the people that want you to be having the podcast and bedtime stories. Matthew has a fantastic voice, definitely not like mine.
I got a good bedtime voice, I've heard.
Like, I couldn't make an impersonation, but that would be a bit cheating. Okay, we're waiting for Angela to get started.
Yeah.
I hope that she can join us. I know that she does, she can. Angela may have actually some connection problems if I'm hearing correctly. I think she, I think she was saying that she's drying up, she's been... She's been a little bit... Hey Angela, thank you very much Angela. I was about to describe your day.
Speaking of the angel, we'll say.
Oh, cute.
There you go.
Hi guys!
And I think an error message or servers are struggling. Seems like, you know, that happens to everyone. Good, all of us are moderators, that's great. And thank you everyone for joining us on this beautiful Wednesday, 29th of December. That's gonna be the last time all of this year. We want to keep it light. We also want to take an opportunity to kind of wrap up and celebrate on everything that we have accomplished during 2021. So thank you very much again for joining. I think one of the highlights of this year is actually having those panels. I think that's, it's the number 15, if I'm counting correctly, I may not. And I think that's been a fantastic opportunity to obviously engage with our customers and discover, be proactive about some problems, including last, during the last session. And every time there is plenty, plenty of learnings for us as a team. And I think that's really, really fantastic to be able to engage with customers in this fashion. I hope you're feeling the same. If you're basically sticking and coming back, that's maybe an indication that you feel that this is productive for you and you stay in the loop of a product that we believe is quite important for your stack. It's quite important for managing your short-term rentals. So everyone is joining about now. Thank you everyone. Angela, how are you feeling today?
I'm great. I'm excited for 2022, really.
Yeah, the bar is low.
Positive, positive thinking, positive thinking. It'll be awesome.
Positive thinking. 2022 is gonna be even better than 2021. I mean, it's a kind of a progress loop. You start with 2020, that is the year we don't talk about. 2021, definitely, we've seen some, some returning back to normal. I'm not sure how long that's gonna stay, but we're gonna stick to the positive. And 2022, come on, that's gonna be the year where we're all back and free, please, from that COVID shit. And can go back to travel with as few restrictions as possible. We can be hopeful. Matthew, how are you doing?
Oh, I'm doing amazing, right? I'm having a great day thus far. It's been good. And one thing I did want to mention, like, we do appreciate these town halls. And if there's anything that we can help you and deliver in these town halls, don't hesitate to give us some feedback. Hey, we'd like some of ABC, we'd like to hear you share some of these things. You know here at Hospitable, we are always, always excited to get feedback from you. So if there's anything specific here to these town halls that you'd like us to touch on, you know, don't hesitate to send us a message. I'm sure you know how to get in touch with us. And if you don't, we'll be sure to let you know how to get in touch with us by the end of our town hall here today. But you can always shoot us an email. Worst comes to worst, shoot me an email, matthew@hospitable.com. Again, feedback is always welcome and appreciated here.
Feedback and questions to Matthew. So, great. So I'm gonna start by basically the usual, so some company updates. And we've had some great news and to be honest, the team was pretty anxious to be hearing positively about it. Frances and Denise were two of amazing customer support team representatives and based in the Philippines, are alive and safe, if you're not aware. So there was a super typhoon, a very powerful hurricane, known as, in the Philippines, as Odette, who has been eating the Philippines, I think two weeks ago. And after a few days without hearing from them, we finally got the confirmation that Denise, who is based in Cebu in the south of the Philippines, has been hit pretty hard, but was able to basically send us a message relatively quickly. It was, the situation was a bit more tense or difficult for Frances, was living on the island of Sargau, I hope I'm saying that right, where the typhoon made first rainfall. So the situation for her is extremely, was extremely concerning. Both are now safe and sound. Denise is back at work already. They've been moving to another location and that is less affected by the outcome of this devastating hurricane. So Denise is back at work already. She was really not expected to. And obviously, what they've been going through has been, has been quite traumatic, if I'm honest, from what I've been hearing for engaging with them. Frances is back in Sargau to help with our community and pack up a few things. So that's been basically, that's been honestly a great relief to be hearing from them and that they were all good in the situation. And I want to, I want to obviously thank them for basically, for what they're prepared for, which is my to-plea integration as to what they have been going through in the past 10 days. And I hope both of them will be able to recover soon and well. I also want to give a huge shout out to, I guess, to our support team, who's been working in reduced capacity. So thank you in particular to Anna, to Jen, to Lisa, like, and Matthew on occasion, for holding the ship together in the past two weeks. We know that it may have had an impact in our ideal response time, but we see those are absolutely unheard of circumstances that we hope will not happen again for the safety of our own team and for our own employees. So thank you for the patience. It's not something that, I mean, we will find ways, we see, to express our support to Frances and Denise to allow them to be recovering faster in the next, in the next few, in the next few days. So that's really the main kind of company update, because that's what has been on our minds really in the past few days. Matthew, what's on the, good luck for the transition here. Any updates on the customer side?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And that is a difficult transition, but a thankful one. And again, a huge shout out to our support team for really doing everything they possibly can with the holidays and being limited. I'm sure anybody on this call who's had to deal with them, you know how wonderful they are. And we're so thankful for the great job that they've done. And with that being said, so just a quick couple of updates. NPS is something that we love to pay attention to, right? How our hosts are feeling about the software, who's promoting us. And this week, our NPS actually had an increase, so we're at a 67, which is a very strong number in our industry. So out of 42, we had 31 individuals who would promote us, you know, eight neutral folks. So the vast majority, super positive, which is great. We appreciate, we appreciate that vote of confidence each and every time you click on that NPS score for us. Customer growth, you know, we're seeing record highs with conversion percentages, which is super exciting from my seat. But those hosts who have started a trial are converting at some of the highest rates that we've seen in our entire history. Super exciting. And we are inching ever so closely to 5,000 customers. I didn't refresh before I got here, but let me give a quick refresh and see if we got over the mark.
No, not yet.
Oh, not yet. Alright, thanks Pierre. Oh man, so if anybody's in a free trial, let's go ahead and click that, click that activate button, be the number 5,000 for us.
Hopefully, it may go down.
It may go down. If you're on the call, please don't, please don't hit that cancel button. Or support team, just delay that click for a couple of minutes, if you will. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And then the other, you know, exciting part for our customers. So we are ordering some company swag. We have a great provider that's given us some lovely swag boxes that we're gonna be sharing with our team. And excitedly, we're looking to share those with our hosts as well. So we just had an Instagram giveaway. We picked 15 lucky winners. I'm not gonna read you all their names, because I don't want them to be embarrassed on a couple of them. I'm just kidding. But pay attention to our social channels, because we're gonna give away some more hospitable swag. We had a lovely team, our lovely, you know, marketing helpers there at Savion Ray, that designed a beautiful swag box. I can't wait for that to arrive. So pay attention to those social channels, LinkedIn, Twitter, Instagram. I know we'll be giving more away. And now TikTok as well. You know, we joined TikTok with all the, all the cool kids and it's exciting, it's gonna be exciting to see what they throw out there. And I wanna talk about really quickly, just kind of some of the things that I'm hearing, right? I sit in a great seat where I get to talk to a lot of hosts and hear their challenges, see what they're looking for. Had a great call today with a host and had a couple of good calls this week with hosts being really appreciative, how easy and simple it was to get up and running with our software. You know, I talked to a host that with 17 properties was able to customize the system in just a couple hours. And, you know, looking at other softwares, it took, talking days, maybe even weeks, to get him up and running with that limited. And he just really appreciated the ease of use and how straightforward it is. And then on the industry, right, just like we've been talking about all of 2021, direct bookings. So people are super obsessed with those direct bookings, right? We wanna get them, we wanna own our reservations, and I can completely understand that. But really, like, how do we get more? How are we leveraging that? What we have available to get that traffic to our site? Because, you know, to be honest, it's gonna be tough to find you in a Google search. There's a lot of listings out there this day and age. But one of the ways to leverage that is those repeat guests tapping into that network, right? If you have somebody and you wow them, if they're gonna come back to the area, there's a good chance they're gonna go back and visit you, right? We're creatures of habit. If it's comfortable, we're probably gonna wanna go back there. I know I go to the same place every time I go up here to Figgedet Forge. And every time I go there, I go to that same spot, because I know what to expect. And I know that if we have some challenging circumstances, my wife and kids aren't gonna have as much fun as they could. So you win over those guests with a great guest experience, right? Use our tool to make sure that you're communicating with those guests thoroughly. Let them know the answers to the questions that they haven't even asked yet. And they're gonna appreciate you that much more. So tap into that network. Leave a few of your direct booking business cards out there in the listing, so that when they leave, they can grab one. If it's possible, throw a 5% discount code on there. Tell them to share it with their friends and families. Tap into their networks and also tap into your networks, right? Another thing that, that I see, and, you know, hosts love to ask the question of, hey, so what brings you to town? And a lot of the hosts I talk to, they bring that up, so that they can try to sniff out one of those bad guests, right? Let's try to catch somebody who's gonna throw a party and see if we can get them to slip up. But I see a lot of good hosts are using that to find out what is actually bringing them to town and is there the potential to come back next time? If they have family in the area, there's a good chance they're gonna wanna stay with you again. That's an opportunity for a future direct booking that's sitting right there in front of you. So make sure that you do all that you can to know, to give them a way for them to find you. So, you know, one of the things that I'm hearing a lot about direct bookings, there's a lot of great resources out there. A lot of people are sharing their knowledge. You know, I follow some great folks on LinkedIn who are always sharing some great content. There are strategies out there, but we're not as successful as Airbnb as marketing our own listings. So again, tap into that network, use those resources available and start seeing some direct bookings flow in. And you can even use our direct booking tool to help you capture some of those pieces and different tools within our system, like the ability to gather an email address and send some messages later on to follow up with them after they're stayed with you. And that's all I have for, you know, what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing. Like Pierre said, I did have some time sitting in the queue, so it was great to get a different bird's eye, a different view of, you know, what hosts need and some of the challenges our hosts are coming up. And as I mentioned before, you know, just keep in mind, we always listen to that feedback. We're building those products based on the feedback that our hosts are sharing with us. So please, if you're within our network, let us know what you need, let us know where you'd like to see us go. You know, we take that information to heart far more than any other company I've worked for, that's for sure. And Pierre, I guess, I guess we could pass that back over to you. I think we have some product updates for what's gone on since the last time we met.
Yes, thank you Matthew, and thank you for the great notes on direct bookings and what we, what really drive them. Obviously, direct has been really top of mind for us in the past few months. So unfortunately, the gift for you were last week. So when we announced Schlegon Code Integration, we are still onboarding more users. I think we still need to basically ensure that we are gonna be offering a very high level of safety and reliability before releasing this to more users. You can however, request access to our Schlegon Code Integration if by simply sending an email to support@hospitable.com, so that we can basically add you, add you to the audience of users that will be able to access to this. I'm the one basically behind the wheel that is controlling that things are working as expected and flagging if some things are not working. We cannot obviously have that on a large scale and we want to make sure that we will be offering you the best experience. I think we've done fantastic progress in the past, in the past two weeks onto basically in terms of experience, in terms of connection, in terms of reliability. Putting Schlegon Code, I think I would be, I would need to have at least one more week of comprehensive and great experience to, before opening that really to the public, particularly ensuring that we have a clear understanding of what's happening. So Schlegon Code, send an email to support@hospitable.com if you are part of the lucky users, obviously on good device. The second gift that we basically served you on the last annual reminder is red calendar widgets. We have been releasing a bunch of fixes. I believe that there were some that were still on the way at this point in time for basically fixing some cross the book that would not be received. I know I've received something from Ben today on my own, on my own account. So I know that basically now it's working. So we can now offer you a widget that can embed calendar that you can use on your own direct booking website, on something that is managed outside of hospitable. You can have a direct link that can, for example, can use social media that can facilitate particularly a guest to book without even having the need for a full website. So that's really something that we're particularly excited to be hearing about. Most of the work this week, however, the past 10 days really has been, past two weeks, has been around stability improvement. This is the holiday season. We obviously have part of a team that is going on vacation and those are well deserved. So I want to give a shout to Even, who is our DevOps engineer, you've been hearing about him in the past few months ago. Been absolutely amazing, basically fixing our infrastructure and improving it. So we actually are working towards upgrading behind the scenes, you know, I would, that's the moment where I start saying a lot of acronyms that you may not be familiar with, but that's okay. For the few of you that are, that are already, we're really working on upgrading a PHP version and so that would benefit from PHP 8 and soon 8.1. Working on upgrading a level, a level version as well, because we're kind of getting stuck here and working towards having the full Kubernetes, community-driven infrastructure, which really comes with a few challenges, but for at a stage, but I think Even has been doing great work with some, and costing with Notir, to basically ensure that a codebase and our infrastructure are basically in line. Toby has been working the past week also on upgrading direct booking website, in particular with amenities, in particular five becomes, and there were a lot of work done with Ben too, on ensuring that, you know, we'd have some great optimization and improvements towards, to facilitate, you know, adding more features, adding more fields, more personalization to your current and upcoming templates for direct. So lots of bug fixes. Now, obviously, 2021 has been very, very, very busy for us. I don't know if you noticed, but we have done, we've done a lot of things and honestly, that's, you've received a newsletter yesterday, kind of maps out, there is literally one feature per month or one big thing that really we've been working a lot towards, that we have released in 2021. So I think the two, three key highlights really are the Airbnb official integration. That's still something that we're deploying. This is the first and unique one of its kind integration that allows you to connect hospitable on top of existing PMS, which is something that definitely was not heard of about for the scope of the integration that we're having. It still offers you higher reliability, higher investigation tools in case there is a problem. And simply a better quality of life with real-time messages being sent and the ability to develop more on top of it. So that's something that was a challenge for us, but we're looking forward to develop special offers, alteration requests and more features as Airbnb is developing them, such as, for example, you know, the resolution API, so that we can accept or access basically disputes on the dispute center of an Airbnb. So that is really the path forward. So I would really encourage you, if you have not done so already, to kind of upgrade, to actually work towards upgrading to Airbnb official. If you have that option, please, you can reach out to customer support to ensure that things are set up properly. That's really important for us. So feel free to send them an email at support@hospitable.com, so that they can assess what needs to be done on your site. We have released a booking.com integration. That was really, that took two years, but it was completed. And we're gonna, we would love to be spending more time on improving that integration. And the third key highlight obviously is able, is upcoming direct booking. So we can already publish direct bookings, publish the real booking website, you can have a widget. Now we have to complete the milestone and work on payment processing for everyone. We kind of started the conversation again on today, this morning with the engineering team. So there are really a lot of moving pieces that are agreeing on that and we obviously want to be able to bring it to you as fast as possible. There were also two kind of operational highlights somehow. Smart B and B became hospitable.com. Can I even say that again? So, new name. Some people may feel it better. So I think that's really a great name, as I've been saying. So it's really represents really our values and what we want to be standing out for. And that's also very much a value that is driving a product and what we want to deliver to our customers and the guests. So you can read on the newsletter a little bit of a piece about changing our name. And yeah, we also became an open equity company, so everyone can actually invest into the company. That is, that has been starting very slowly and now basically we're already at $170,000 that were, that were raised exclusively from our customers. I think that kind of demonstrates that we're pretty special to some, to some of our customers. We are able to not only have 5,000 customers, but I'm hoping that very soon we'll be able to have 100, 1,000 investors into, into our company. So if you want to be investing into our company, you can do so. You can sign up on invest.hospitable.com, which is what we are using as an investment portal. And we, this is the only way to basically invest at this point in time. And that's right. So in the US, you need to be an accredited investor. If you are elsewhere, outside of the US, you can invest without having this thing. So thank you. I think that's Matthew that shared the investment portal, so you can basically sign up. And we are basically sending, if you are interested in investing, we are still gonna be sending you some information about the business and why we believe it's a good opportunity to invest into the tool that you're relying on for your short-term rental business. Plenty of other things. I wouldn't be talking about them, but they're really, I think, I'm really happy of the success and the progress that we've been, the progress that we've been experiencing for 2021. And I believe that puts us in better position again, still for 2022. Okay. I think we can go, thank you very much for your attention. I think we can go to some Q and A. So I think we need to have, I'm just checking, are we still, have we passed 5,000? Matthew, you can check. I think I'm that close to basically having the investor dashboard into the, into the clubhouse, so everyone can actually access it.
Still not, 4999.
Okay.
Oh, and wow, one more thing too, just to, just to touch upon it. We are, we are hiring, so if you know anybody that would like to work for a fantastic company, I've absolutely loved my experience with Hospitable. I've worked in a lot of places and this is second to none for the experience for the team. And so we're looking for a couple of customer success folks over in European time zone. So also, you know, taking anybody on this side of the world. And we're also looking for some engineers, so if you know any fantastic talent, we'd love for you to go ahead and share them. You know, you could reach out to us directly. And if you also go to angel.co/. I think it's still smart B and B on there, but you can see all the jobs and that's our main, you know, recruitment site. So, you know, don't hesitate to go on there. Come join a wonderful team. We'd love to have you.
Thank you very much, Angela. I think we can start for Q and A. So if you're, yeah, go ahead Angela.
Hi. Anyone have any questions? Anyone at all? Anything that's been said, any suggestions?
I think I do need to actually first opening, open. So basically you can raise your hands and I do believe we're gonna see some quite soon. Thank you very much. So just a reminder general for everyone that will be joining us on stage. This is gonna be recorded and will be made available on our support center within the product, so that will be made public. So if you are on stage, you basically agree to being recorded. If you do not want to be recorded and want to ask a question maybe anonymously, that's okay. You can do so. You can go to slidoo.com, S-L-I-D-O dot com and enter the hashtag hospitable to be able to have a dashboard where you can ask your question anonymously. You can have a first name if you would like to, and we'll basically be alternating between questions on stage and questions from, that are asked in an asynchronous fashion, so to speak.
We do have someone, Regina. I'm gonna invite Regina to speak.
Fantastic.
Regina? No? We'll circle back to Regina. Yep, I don't think she's able. Andy?
Clubhouse is having a few, curb is having a few issues. Few issues.
Andy is now with us, I think.
Okay.
How's it going? Good, how are y'all doing?
Fantastic. Doing fine. Looking forward to 2020 ending.
Yeah.
How can I help you?
Yeah, so for our business, we're really starting to try to ramp up on direct bookings. And I know y'all were making some good progress on the direct booking side. And then it seemed like the focus then shifted over to smart locks and then the booking widget. And then after the release of direct bookings, it seems like there hasn't really been much things going on with it. I think you kind of mentioned a little bit about the, the amenty sort of thing that's still showing up as like little tags instead of actual like useful information. And the site still looks kind of weird and janky and, you know, photos kind of like flashing it out and stuff like that. So I was curious if y'all were still thinking about doing the direct booking side. This has been pushed to the backlog, because this is gonna be a huge thing for us going into 2021 and whether, you know, we somewhat actually keep going with hospitable or some other site.
Yeah. So Andy and everyone that's gonna ask a question, let me reassure you, this is definitely not on the backlog. And we're basically working on it full-time to be, to be quite clear. So for example, all the work that we're doing in terms of infrastructure, upgrading codebase, even if that's particularly appearing on the code, on the back burner, it's actually to allow us to facilitate any kind of payment processing integration, that's gonna be coming soon. The first thing that basically has been, we've been at work in the past week, in the past two weeks, has really been obviously understanding the fees and being able to retrieve them, so that we can actually work on, you know, it's great to have the payment processing, but you need to have first of all the calculator. And this is basically required us to develop a lead listing feature, so that you know when we are, when you have a property and you are being, you know, for example, two Airbnb listings or one Airbnb, one verbal, you, we need to basically be able to say, okay, the direct for direct bookings and this is gonna be coming from that listing and we're gonna trust that to be able to generate a price. So those are items that have been worked on very recently as well. I think I just, I also have to be aware of making sure that, you know, we don't want to have, to move to many things that are gonna be breaking. There is this time when we have a limited team available. I think all of what we're doing right now is really to allow us to develop faster in the rest, in the rest of the year. Again, I also do believe that for engineering, for engineering, we need to have a little bit of time to think. And that always comes with a lot of benefits, but then basically going straight to coding. Now, obviously, we're definitely, we are, I think we're positioned to say that we are not going to be in a decision paralysis on this. But I think all the work that is being done right now to prepare those last, this last milestone of the payment processing part, that we're all looking forward to, is basically necessary to be able to tackle that. There are a lot of moving pieces. And we want to basically spend the, spend the time to ensure that it's gonna be working as expected and as easily as possible for the, for the end user. So that's, that's really what we're, what we're working on. As for really resources and availabilities on our side, I think we are working on a deadline for Airbnb official in particular. So we're in talks with Airbnb to ensure that some issues are being resolved on the, I believe, on their side. And although that's not something that most customers will be perceiving, and that basically is also something that is forcing us to require, forcing us to put some resources there. And we have to maintain an entire product on top of it. So all of that sounds, you know, excuses. So all of that sounds, you know, excuses, it may be clear, this is still gonna be the priority as soon as we have uh the capacity to be doing so. Every time that we spend, he's spent on uh on direct bookings at this point in time.
Cool, thank you. Appreciate all that.
Yeah, no, and just one more thing. So like, uh, we have an internal Slack channel where we talk about all the announcements. So it's Wednesday and for three straight days, every day this week, we've had a different release on the direct booking. So it's definitely something that's at the forefront of our minds. Um, but you know, as Pierre said, uh, resources, making sure that we manage those accordingly. But yeah, definitely working for Andy, we wanna get that site out, probably just as bad as you do. I'm, I'm not gonna lie, maybe a little bit more than you do at this point, but, but we'll, we could debate that later. Thanks so much, though.
Yeah, and maybe one thing that'd be helpful for our standpoint, it sounds like y'all have those sorts of announcements. I don't know like what the features y'all have been coming out with and stuff, but it's, it doesn't seem transparent to, to our side. So it seems like from, from what I see, there's not any work really being done on it. So if, if y'all are able to elevate those in some sort of way, that would be probably very helpful. Transparency is always a great thing.
Yeah, one of our core principles, that's for sure. And thanks for sharing that. We do have a, you know, we do have a channel where, uh, you know, we have our, I, why is it blanking right now? But we do make product announcements. And, uh, you know, I know some of the engineers on this call, that's something that we could probably throw on there, some of those minor fixes. Especially if it, you know, you'd appreciate seeing some of that progress, even though if it says things in the background, I think that would be also great for you all to kind of see, hey, we are still working on it, we're still adding things daily, even though it may not be those big ticket items, but you know, we're, we're using brick by brick. We're gonna go ahead and build that best wall that we possibly can. Appreciate that, Andy.
Yep, thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Andy. Noah. No? Please do send your requests.
I, I believe we can have several people probably joining once, once to ensure that basically we're not having.
Noah's with us. Hi, Noah.
Hello, hello again, Angela. Pierre.
I'm really happy you joined, welcome.
Of course, Pierre, comment ça va?
Yeah, oh, can I help you?
Hey, so uh, so I am the owner of Wish S T R. We have over a hundred properties and we recently, fairly recently, this past year, decided that we needed an enterprise solution and I think stupidly switched from smart B and B over to uh Guesty. Uh, Guesty, great. No, not great at all. Guesty sucks, I hate Guesty, I hate everything about it. I hate everything about it and it's ten times more expensive than you guys. So I am here to number one, share that I appreciate you guys, I love you guys and I'm fighting tooth and nail to switch back. It's not exactly my decision exclusively, but I'm lobbying for that. And I need you guys to help me convince my business partner, who's kind of in charge of the technology side, that yours is the right platform for us.
We appreciate that vote of confidence and I think Angie, uh Angela reached out to you with, with my contact info. I'd love to get with you offline and kind of talk about some of those challenges. You know, it really all depends on, on what you need and, and how we can go. I know one of the things that you had asked us previously was about our connections and, you know, that we do have an API connection to Airbnb, to Verbo, to booking.com. So we do have those instant syncs in place. You know, I think you also mentioned some smart locks. Uh, we're working, we have our Schleg in progress. Uh, you know, we do have another integration with a third party tool that can help. But definitely would love to get with you offline and kind of talk about some of those things that we may be missing.
Yeah, Matthew, I'd love to, Angela, please send me that. I don't, I'm not sure if I got that, but I would love to chat with you after.
That's great.
Um, thank you again.
No, well, you may, you may have been a good luck charm, we just hit five thousand and one, so yay, way to go, team. Thanks, Noah. I'm gonna go ahead and say it was on you, I don't know, man, but serendipitous, I think, I think we may need to work together again in the future.
Speaking of which, I didn't know that you guys had just offered me kind of a public offering. I'd probably put fifty grand in there, I'm gonna look into that later. I'm serious, I think you guys do great work and I think you guys have a lot of potential to grow in twenty two.
And thank you very much. And to be clear, that's something that we obviously are gonna be putting in the customer experience and in the products, in the features, etc. So, you know, this is really investing into yourself at this point. I think if you're making an investment of that nature, it could probably be, even, I mean, you, you would be benefiting obviously from the upside, but I think you'll be breaking even anyway instead of features that are released to you and underpriced one. So, you know.
Based on what I'm spending on Guesty, it would pay for itself, yeah. It is ridiculous what I'm dealing with over here.
Well, I don't want to disparage.
I do.
Okay.
I do believe that Guesty is a fantastic product. Uh, definitely we're after very different uh also customer experiences and different styles. Um, so, yeah.
I have nothing good to say about Guesty, all I've done is break everything and charge me more money. But, but sorry, let me, let me take a step back, let's get more specific. Uh, I think I actually found the solution to integrate your technology with my edge state uh lock solution. So that's actually not gonna be an issue. My other, my biggest issue was direct booking and platforms integration. Uh, uh, A, API. So it sounds like you guys are working intently on the direct booking side of things. I'm really excited about that and I wanna talk to Matthew about that. But what's the deal with API?
So I'm not sure what you mean by API, because I think I, I, I saw a conversation where you basically were saying that all the, all the integration that we do have are API based, obviously. Whether that's Airbnb, Verbo, or booking.com.
I recall that you guys had, uh, you, you integrated the calendars using iCal technology and that resulted in a few double bookings between VRBO and Airbnb, where meaning somebody booked at the same property at the same time on two different platforms.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure when that would have been. Uh, I think for us, Nike is really a fallback with a totally inefficient technology uh that we may uh be advising at, at some, at some key point in time. But really, uh, everything, we, we manage the calendars on an API, an API fashion. So that's, that's always the way it's been working. So maybe that was something that was not correctly communicated to you. Um, but yeah, you can, you can, and, and the thing is that unless, unlike, um, except for booking.com, you can actually try out uh hospitable today without having to create any kind of mess uh with your current setup. And you can really try it out and see, see for yourself. That's actually one of the key defining features that you can have with their integrations is that really they are non-exclusive. So you can actually onboard yourself uh and in a, in a much more. Uh, because I do imagine that for a hundred properties, you have a lot of processes, you have a lot of knowledge uh to be, to be migrating over. And that's something that obviously we facilitate, that's a kind of integration, you don't need to be like.
The biggest thing that my partner is concerned with is he, he's upset with me because I'm lobbying now to go back after I, you know, was pressuring him to hurry up and get on Guesty. I mean, I'm about like, I'm, I like to move quickly. So anyway, he's, he's not excited about a whole new onboarding. So if you guys could offer me some consult, some, maybe a dedicated consultant who would assist my partner in doing this.
Noah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I, as Matthew suggested, the best solution is to connect with him directly um and take the conversation further. I'm gonna have to cut you off here, so we have enough time for everyone. But we'd be super excited, like I mentioned, to welcome you guys back to the hospitable family. So um, we'll get, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure you have all the information.
And just really quickly, Noah, like that's something that we do help with, you know, getting you to onboard. So that's, that's absolutely something that we would, we would offer to you and we offer to the vast majority of hosts that are out there. So, yeah, we got you there.
And again, thank you for the love.
I do love Angela, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Noah, we will help you.
Okay, so Steve. Yeah, Steve, hello, Steve.
Steve. Hello, Steve.
Good, good, uh, thanks for having me. I'm ba, I'm based in the United States and have a few different properties with you guys that are based in Park City, Utah, in the mountains. Just a couple of quick questions and I joined about five minutes late, so you may have updated this and I've seen some of the updates, other updates. On the smart locks issue and the first integration that you released, do you have any rough timeframe, month or quarter in twenty twenty two for things like Yale and all the Asa Able lock series that's August based? Would be massive time saver for you guys to have that integration for us. I was just wondering if you have any rough idea of when in twenty twenty two you might have that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So thank you for that. Um, this is a great opportunity to kind of, to kind of repeat that. Obviously, right now we're doing Schleg on code because that's fastest integration that we can develop. The problem that's happening right now is that basically the provider that we're using, which is Unomi, has been purchased, has been acquired by Schleg, Legion, uh, the prime company. So basically, there is a little bit of a corporate thing going on with Asa Able, with the company uh that owns August locks and Yales. And they have already an existing integration and we are basically pushing forwards and really motivating everyone there to ensure that this integration will be pursuing uh so that we can have the PIN code management. Unfortunately, the timeline is not really on our side, but basically we always have two ways, two path. Uh, other, basically that integrator is delivering August and Yale for us, or we basically decide to integrate directly. Uh, but they do not have an open API. So that's basically in any case, it's gonna be a bit of a, a bit of a longer timeline. Um, we do have other integration that we contemplated, that's gonna be for us, New Key, there's gonna be Eglom. There are also some other integrators that we want to be working with, in particular, remote locks. So that was, uh, Noah was talking about and wanting uh for, for his business. So there is basically a lot of things that we have for us. August and Yale, the moment that they're integrated on this third party integrator, it will be available in a matter of, you know, one day, because everything has been optimized to facilitate, you know, multiple integrations uh at this point in time. So we really would be, uh, we have already communicated extensively that we are, we need that uh yesterday. For, so again, we're talking here for August locks and, and Yale uh locks, uh, that are both connected locks, yeah.
Okay, cool, that was my question, thanks so much, love what you guys do.
Thank you, Steve.
So much, Steve.
Thanks. Okay, is, do we have any question on slide or at this point?
It's, we do. And I think it's, it's a nice segue, but I think you may have already touched upon it. Let me just relay the question. So we have a question from anonymous, but then this is Nick for the slag integration, is a smart lock code working now? I think we've already touched on that.
Let me clarify, let me clarify, so first of all, it's smart lock underscore code. Uh, that is a code that would be, that would be working. I've been testing that and reviewing on some clients account myself today and yesterday and demonstrated that this is working fine for all the codes that are, that are getting provisions and we're provisioning all codes for the future. So this is working. Um, with depending on your setup, uh, you, the code can either be completely random or be the last N digits of uh your guest phone number, that may be the last four, that'd be up to the last six, working Schleg on code. So basically there's this kind of range that we're having for numbers. But for the customers that are currently on the Schleg on code, this is working and I've been demonstrating that. Um, and I think we have Timothy, slow southern boy, uh, talking about the email to send to get into the Schleg on code. Uh, I don't know what's, what's his question.
I'm not sure, Timothy, if you're here, can you just redirect your um question? Not sure what's the, what the question is.
Uh, yeah, but that's, we, we basically can send obviously the code into the email with the smart look code. Um, small, uh, smart code, short code.
Exactly.
Okay, um, okay, I think we can go back to the queue uh on the people that have been raising their hands. Angela, who's next?
Jason, Jason, are you able to join us? Hmm, no. Moving swiftly, oh, oh, Jason is here, hi, Jason.
Hi, how's it going? Job site, get away from the background noise.
This all is fine, how are you doing, Jason?
Uh, doing well, thank you. Um, so I'm a relatively new user to uh hospitable. Uh, I think it was smart B and B right before the switch, but um, something that I, that led me to uh hospitable instead of uh your porter or Guesty for host was the, the promise for, you know, a kind of a robust um analytics uh function of the, the service, so performance uh metrics and so forth. I think that it's listed on the, uh, on the site somewhere. Uh, but you guys are developing that, is that still uh a priority, is that still underway?
No, so that, that's great. Uh, that's also something that's very, very popular in those, in those town halls uh in terms of, in terms of requests. We used to have a, a metrics product that unfortunately we had to retire because it basically uh was impossible to be maintaining and growing from. Um, so at this point in time, there's something I'm really looking forward to. That is one, uh, I, I believe that we have a strategy. Sorry, Jason, can you maybe mute yourself because we're kind of hearing the background noise? Okay, I'm gonna try and mute you, okay? Um, so for, for us, we've been, uh, so, uh, yeah, we, we've been working on, uh, for matrix until February twenty twenty. Uh, and I think at this point in time, we kind of decided to stop and we focus on basically focusing more resources than on, you know, booking integration at the time uh and then to, towards direct, uh, which we saw were very popular request. I think for us, what we want to have in terms of perform, and so you were mentioning the performance, I think that the financial performance of your listing. Uh, we do, we do, we definitely do want to, to set up this metric. I think the angle, however, is gonna be a bit different for us to be able to appropriately monetize it. And I'm not sure that it's gonna be sustainable uh for, for customers that depend on it. Um, that's, that basically is gonna be to have a marketplace of service providers. Uh, you cannot, even if you're a self manager or property manager, you need people uh to be able to manage that. And that's through the, through this kind of angle that we believe that metrics are actually making the best, the best sense. So if you want to assess the performance of your property, that's gonna be because you want to have a pricing expert, a revenue manager. That's gonna be because you have, you want to give access to your accountant. Um, if you want to assess your communication metrics, your response time, that's because you want to assess the performance of a virtual assistant or a guest receptionist. Um, if you want to have reporting for cleaning list, that's because you actually want to assess the performance of a cleaning person. So all of those metrics, I believe the most important one can be tied to an actual kind of profession uh or professional anyway um that you may want to get out from. And I think that's our path to basically ensuring that we are building those features to a level where we have to basically maintain it. Um, at this point in time, definitely, uh, we are working in direct booking, smart lock is really the extra on the side. Uh, and we've been able to kind of ship it, that's really challenging with the level of resources that we're having. Um, the, in a way, simply the team uh that we have, uh, is very, very limited. That's five people uh on the, on the engineering side. Um, and so we do want uh to invest more into metrics, but that requires, you know, um, shipping, really to be honest, direct bookings uh in, in particular, so that we can go back to this kind of big project on our side. Jason, I've, I muted you, so you may want to, if you want to respond, I'm sure you do. Uh, you have to basically click on the, on the mic, uh, which I believe should be on your bottom right.
Okay, how's, how's that?
That's perfect, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great, okay, uh, no, thanks for the, the information on that. Um, you know, I'll be on the lookout, you know, for me, you know, I'm not a big operation, but, you know, I do like to, to have a good line of sight as to, you know, how my properties are performing and if I'm making changes, how is that affecting things? So, you know, I don't necessarily need, and I don't know how much this relates to the rest of the, your subscribers and users, but um, you know, just a, a baseline, you know, uh, functionality would, would be helpful, uh, at least for the interim uh as you progress into the enterprise side of, uh, say, depth and functionality.
I do appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, Jason, it's definitely something that we hear out there. And there are a couple of other tools that you could utilize, like especially with some of the metrics that we can provide and even things like our web hooks, where we see other hosts who are using like a software like Zapier to take that data, throw it into their Google spreadsheet and then, you know, have that Google data studio for free running in the background to get some things at a glance. Obviously, that's not the solution we want for you, we wanna make sure everything's in-house. But there are some workarounds available with the current data that we can provide over to you that you may be able to see some of those numbers and, and, you know, create some nice graphs and have a bit more control over, over what information is being sent over to you and, and how you manage that. Again, not the optimal solution, uh, a bit of a workaround, but I, I'm right there with you and on every meeting, every week, you know that Matt Demetrio is gonna go ahead and let them know that, yep, uh, uh, metrics, you know, owner reporting payouts, all that information. Uh, those are the things that we're hearing that, that the industry wants and needs. And, you know, as Pierre mentioned, I, I think we have a good plan of how to tackle that going forward uh and, and looking forward to when we can tackle that and, and move forward.
Okay, great, thanks. And I'm not gonna take any more time, but I will provide just a little bit of feedback from a new user. Uh, I find it difficult as I try to onboard from say Airbnb to hospitable. Uh, I get a little confused sometimes when I'm uh opening up the chat because on the desktop client, it arranges from, I think, bottom to top and then on the app client, it arranges the chat from top to bottom. So it's, it's like flipped depending on which one you're using. So sometimes I find it hard to just follow the conversations as I jump from user to user.
I can, I can hear that, I think that's something that we've been talking also about with Ben, uh, with our front end developer uh about it and definitely, that's, that's one of something that basically is, is coming up uh on a frequent basis.
And I think that's how Airbnb was originally, right? Airbnb has switched it so that they went, so that's a bit of a remnant from, from when we first got started because they had the conversations going in, in the other way and then they've made that switch rather recently. But I appreciate that, Jason, that's awesome and thanks so much for sharing that.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jason, so much for the feedback. Okay, who do we have next? John. Hi, John.
Hello, guys, how are you?
Hello, John.
My man, John, hey.
I can't, uh, I can't not speak on your town hall, you guys use clubhouse in the most effective way, so I really appreciate that.
Nice, I will take the compliment, thank you.
I have a. I have a question and a comment. So the question is a follow-up on the Schleg integration. Had Pierre, rather than me just explaining everything, has there been any progress with the, you know, with the issue that I was having where I'm not the primary account holder for Schleg?
Yeah. So I, I know that's something that Matthew circulated again. Uh, I, I don't believe there is a problem because you were able to see the locks. Um, I do, I did do a few things on your account and to actually be creating the code. I think there maybe, uh, is a problem. I would need to investigate and spend a little bit more time on it simply. Um, but for me, there, there, there is no button X in relation with the, uh, with the Schlegon code integration for your specific case.
Okay, I'll, I'll start trying to use it and see, uh, see how it goes. So.
I, I, we need to check that with you simply to make sure that it's basically working as expected and that all future reservations that we could, that is provisioned. And that's not something that you could expect from the last hour, uh, that, at that point in time. Um, so, yeah.
Perfect. I'm excited about that. And then my comment is, I, I, I kind of alluded to this, uh, on a post on LinkedIn, on your post on LinkedIn. There seems to be this kind of belief that hospitable is not enterprise, uh, you know, is less than enterprise, uh, grade. PMS, but I honestly, I, I see people who have hundreds of units using hospitable as the main, uh, you know, main PMS and then adding other things onto it. And so I, I just, I get a little defensive when people compare you to Guesty and, you know, hospitable and think Guesty is enterprise and hospitable is not. So I, I hope you guys in your marketing and in your, um, presentation, you know, make yourself sound like you're playing with the big boys because you, you guys really are. So. Anyway, that, that was my comment and I will sit down and, uh, let other people ask questions.
Appreciate that, John. That's, we wholeheartedly appreciate that. And you know, it's funny because like I was just on a call with somebody who was going between us and Guesty and they were just absolutely mind blown. They were like, wait, but you do what we need. I didn't think that was the case. Like I thought you just were a lot different than what you are. But again, you know, and anybody listening out here, it always depends on what you need, right? I, I'm in sales. Don't let me convince you that you need something else, right? And I promise you I won't, but make sure that you understand your needs. What are those things that are going to help your business move forward? And make sure that you're finding that provider that's going to deliver on those items specifically. I hear it a lot where people are like, you know, my eyes are bigger than my stomach. I bought this software because I was going to use all 360 different features. Here I am three years later and I still only use three things, but I've paid for three years worth of 360 features. So again, make sure that you understand what your needs are, what that software delivers and, and what's going to help you move your business forward. And then go seek that partner out that's going to give you the reliable solution for those needs specifically. John, you're the man. Thank you so much for that, 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 that fantastic.
Thank you, guys. Have a happy new year. Um, and I'll go back into the audience.
Thank you, John. Same to you.
We'll send you that check directly right after this. Don't let, oh, I'm sorry.
He's the consultant now. He cannot take checks from us. Well, otherwise it's going to be a bit more expensive. Uh, yeah, I think I just wanted to follow up, but really, I mean, obviously there are multiple products in, in this space. That's absolutely great. I think I definitely do not want, uh, hospitable to be branded as an enterprise product. Um, I think that definitely we need to make a better effort. That's really a challenge to really be explaining that even though you know us maybe for the messaging automation, we do a lot more things now. Uh, the fact that we're working in drag, the fact that we want to be able to build a platform for you to be recruiting your team. Uh, definitely those are very different items that are pretty unique. I honestly, what's, everything that hospitable has been doing great has been on its own path. And we are not going to try to, uh, well, we're going to stick to our own path and believe, uh, in what we, in what we do. Obviously not being completely deaf either. Okay, so yeah, so we're not going to have, we're not going to have hospitable for the enterprise.
Are, are you a PMS? Are you a channel manager? I hear it all the time. You know what? We're, we're hospitable. That's, that's what we are and that's what you should hope to be.
Okay, who's coming next?
Let's hear from Adam. Adam.
Adam.
Yes, Adam is with us. Hi, Adam.
Hi, uh, thank you guys again. Uh, reiterate everyone else's thanks for making our life a lot easier. Um, you know, we just have three properties on your platform, but we're a startup and we use our properties as a campus to generate revenue to help offset, you know, our startup expenses. Um, kind of like when you guys got started. So, um, you guys have been really helpful freeing up time for us. Uh, and so the question I really have is directed to, uh, the, the calendaring feature when we add a task. And so at this point, we are, we are adding our cleaners, uh, when they, when we assign a clean and it sends out the calendar to their calendar, except we don't know when they accept the clean. And we use three different cleaning teams. Uh, so that's a little bit problematic. It's almost like we have to push out a, a picture of the full calendar. Everyone has to, you know, be right on the calendar. Everyone pick, you know, accepts their clean. And then we put it into the tasks and it goes into their calendar. But it would be a lot easier if we could just, uh, set the task in the calendar. Then they have an option to accept it almost like a calendar invite. And if they don't, then we know that they didn't accept that clean. Does that make sense?
That makes, yeah, that makes a ton of sense. And, and that's something that we hear, you know, we do hear a lot around operations. So the ability to accept or decline, also the ability to go ahead, um, and mark a task as done. Like those are things that we hear all the time. One thing, it does require some, some manual, you, you gotta pay attention if you use this solution. But what you can do is you can actually go in and give them all the ability through the user management functionality to be able to manage other tasks. So you can give them and just create a rule where you're automatically creating a task after every checkout and have them go into the system, you know, specifically at whatever intervals are going to work for your business. And then they can go ahead and select their name from the dropdown. And then once they do that, they would have the ability, you would see that it's on the calendar for them. The part that would be a challenge for you is you just need to make sure that you're paying attention to that regularly to make sure that those jobs have been assigned, those jobs have gone there. So while we don't have the ability to send it out to a pool or send it out to like a waterfall and have it go from A to B to C, you can just create the tasks and put them out there and have your team go in through their user management portal and then go ahead and select, yep, we want that job. We're going to click on it, find our name in the dropdown. And then it's going to be assigned to them. It'll appear on their calendar. And you'll also be able to see it on your end as well, that it's been assigned to that specific team. And then there are a few places in the system where you can also see those unassigned tasks. So that's just what's, you're going to have to pay attention to, to make sure that, hey, we don't have any tasks last minute that haven't been picked up by any of those, uh, any of those teams just yet.
Right, I got you. So the solution is just give them a login and allow them to select, you know, sort of priority. Who selects first? Who selects second? Um, yeah, it is a workaround. It's not quite as, uh, uh, efficient for us, but I appreciate you mentioning that. Uh, and sometimes cleaners or their teams are not quite as, um, technically savvy, uh, I guess. I mean, they should be able to do it. So it is, it is a workaround. I appreciate you sharing that. Um, but, uh, and I know there's only a certain number of things you guys can, you know, accomplish as a startup team. Uh, so you kind of prior, you have to prioritize. Um, the other, the other question was just, uh, this is again, uh, more reiterating on the metric side. Even just that Zapier comment was helpful. Uh, I'll look into that. But just the basic, we have some tax reporting that we have to do on a monthly basis, uh, with the state that we're in. So, you know, just the, just basic revenue, uh, on, you know, Airbnb, the RBO and direct bookings would be, you know, uh, very helpful. So I just want to kind of stand in support of that, of, of that, uh, metric comment.
Ha- have you gone in and pulled any of those metric reports that we provide?
You know, I, I, when I, when I went into the metric report, it says it only pulls the Airbnb channel. So, you know, that's not, that's the only one.
Ben, we got to make some of those changes. Yeah. So the reservations report is the one that you want to pay a bunch of attention to. So if you go to the reservations, which is the first one that's there, when you pull that report, it's going to have all the financial details that you need across channels. So the Airbnb only, that payout report specifically, like that's tied to our old Airbnb integration. However, that very first one, reservations, go ahead and filter it so you can see when the check-in was. Uh, you even have other options there as well. You can select all your properties, a selection of properties. But go ahead and pull that CSV and it's going to have all the data that you need and that you're looking for right there.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. Thanks, guys. That solves it then.
Pay, payouts is really the financial transaction that Airbnb is sending to you and I can afford an aggregate of reservations. And actually now there's something that we'll be able to support on the Airbnb official integration as soon as basically we have more capacity. Um, I, I just wanted to tie again, the two, the two comments because it's a kind of, you cannot dream better. Uh, it's basically you have something to say about operation and about task and basically tying it to metrics. And that's again, exactly what we want to contemplate. Task, task as it's been done right now, it's very clear for, uh, for short-term operator that there are some severe gaps that actually do not allow you to use that completely because we kind of say, hey, I want task. Okay, you're going to have task. Oh, yeah, but I want to have, try them to accept and decline. Oh, and now that's the time where we're at with the situation where we're at right now. And we kind of have to almost kind, okay, this is not the focus. You cannot have a product that's going to be about task management where the subject matter is actually going to be the host. The subject matter is going to have to be the person that's going to have to accept or decline. And that's what, what we want to have as a focus to this, you know, idea of marketplace service providers. Because that's what actually facilitated everything. You get to accept and decline. You get to build them an interface where they can be recruited. And that actually solves a lot of the problems that are going to be coming after. Because it's not a task, it's about accepting the task, but it's not accepting the task. It's actually being able to see that task has been successful. You want to be able to show the picture, you see the pictures if the, uh, because you are hosting that property remotely. You want to be able to check, uh, what is the comments about the reviews, um, that those guests have been writing. Has there been any kind of incident in the conversation saying, hey, this is not clean, et cetera? So you can have a full report about it. This is, the next thing is going to be, I want to run my payroll. I mean, you have all the information. You know that the cleaners have been doing that job for that time. They've been uploading the report. Why can I not just pay them through your application? And then sure, but that person is on vacation and I want to be able to, to switch another provider or another property and I'm adding a new property, et cetera. And that's what we, that's at the end of the day, I believe is, is a more extensive angle, definitely. That really doubles down on who our customers really are. Uh, those are customers that are self-managing their properties, need to be able to find a way to source great professionals in the area to be able to serve their, their market and serve their business. And that's obviously what, what, what we want to build for 2022. That's going to be a very big milestone. Uh, but I, I think that's kind of confirming that this is the right, the right path. It's not just an accept and decline button because you're going to have something else coming afterwards. And we need to basically take the time to think a little bit as to, oh, we want to structure it in a nicer way, uh, for you to be able to grow with us.
Pierre, I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, just to add on that, even the accept decline and then a little reminder text or email so that, you know, there's a little nudge that, hey, they accepted the clean. But here's a, here's a little 48 hour window. You have a clean coming up. That's another one that would be helpful. I know it would be well received on these, on, on behalf of the cleaners. So, thank you.
I, I get it. I do believe that this is a, we need to have a change of paradigm. I know I should say just yes, and it's a great idea. It's, it is. But I believe that you should not be the user of that feature. The person that knows how to set up their operation and the task should be the cleaning operation directly. Uh, because they will be having something working for them. What you need from, from, from them is really the assurance that everything is set up on their side. And they're basically are doing the job. That's the end of it. You don't want to spend any time setting up test notification, reminders, calendar, et cetera. Because at the end of the day, they are the service providers and you should be, they should be empowered to do the, other setup that works for them. Uh, to be efficient and resilient. So I, I think that's really what we, what we want to be building. You recruit the cleaners, you onboard the cleaners, we onboard the cleaners to ensure that they're using those features to the best of the capacity. Operations is about people. It's not about tasks. Uh, and yeah.
Yeah.
A bit short of breath right now, I'm sorry. I'm running a marathon in my bedroom right now.
And absolutely just make it so that, you know, it's, it's that much easier for them. And it's, it's at the end of the day, less work for you and they still have that full image of what's upcoming. And we're assuring that, you know, all those cleans are taken care of exactly as you expect them to. Adam, you're the man. Thank you so much for those.
Yeah, you bet, guys. I yield the mic. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, Angela, who's coming next?
So we have Derek.
Hello, hi.
Hello, Derek. How are you doing?
Hey, I'm doing well. Yes, hello.
That's a, that's a familiar name. You've been talking a lot in the past few days.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. I'm a proud investor at this point, pending, uh, you find my wire, but I'm sure that will come through.
That will come through at one point. Thank you.
So, uh, amazing job. I, I run on, I do Airbnb as a side job and run a software company. I'm so impressed with the community you're building, the equity opportunity. I, I envy it for my own company. I, I really kudos to the leadership team for the transparency. So that's comment one. Another comment is, um, I think you guys might underestimate, uh, or maybe not underestimate, but I, I would encourage you to explore, the lever of pricing to accelerate some of the things that you're doing, right? There's so many questions here and I don't think anyone's disagreeing about, all the questions are ultimately tied to a problem and the problem is tied to a need in the product. And we, we just heard people say you're 10 times cheaper, you know, et cetera. I, I pay all the time increased subscription fees for software. And sometimes I don't like it because they didn't add any more value. And sometimes I love it because they're adding more value, they're solving the problems and I know that we're going to accelerate solving those problems. So I, I, if you paint as a straw man, like, hey, with current pricing and growth rate, we're going to solve these problems in 2022. But, you know, with the combination of the investment and maybe increased pricing are a different tier, we can solve these problems. I think we'd get behind you to, to increase the team, hire the teams that are needed. Because honestly, I think you guys are an incredible, affordable value now. And obviously we want to pay market value. But there's a lot of value here and I think a lot of appetite. And I will think we want to make sure that your team has all the resources to accelerate these things. We're depending on this for our livelihood. And so
I know.
We would be, we would be, I think we'd be open to, given the transparency that your group has. And I think if you cast that vision about what is possible with the current resources and then frame that, you know, in pricing, I, I think we'd give good feedback. Ultimately, the decision is yours. Um, because, uh, yeah, let's throw some fuel on the fire and solve these problems faster.
We have, so that, that's, that's the part there, um, that may sound even more disappointing is that we have plenty of fuel. Um, we, we basically have more than $400,000, uh, $417,000 in cash and crypto. I'm going to disclose, but that's not going so well these days. Uh, and over the past 30 days, we've made a profit of nearly $444,000. So imagine that's about 10 full-time jobs or, you know, eight, depends on what's exactly the pay grade. But I think, you know, in a case for the, for the average, basically based on a profit in the past 10 months, we're recruiting 10 people. Uh, Matthew has been spending like, I don't know, Matthew, too many interviews in the past, in the past two days.
We got, I think we got seven, we got seven, seven candidates in the pipeline right now that we move forward with. Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely that, that's a.
Uh, we are, that's just the challenge that we're having is that basically, I'm kind of saying that, that's, that's something that I've been saying for a long time about smart B and B then. It was built in reverse because you already had the product market fit almost, almost on the 10, 10. I'm, I'm saying on the five really, uh, morning I'm waking up and basically I'm seeing a lot of listings that I don't want to recognize on the database. And we add the money, we add the cash and I was just extremely slow to actually recruit the first employee. Now we're at a new level where we cannot grow past basically recurring, recruiting great managers and great leaders to be, to be, to be basically spreading the, the rest of the team. We, we need, we're currently a team of 15. We have the capacity to go to 30. With, with the current, you know, not counting on any kind of third-party investment at all. This is the right move for us and that's what basically what our goal is. We just need them to be able to ensure that they're going to be happy, they're going to be productive, they're going to be onboarded successfully. Uh, and that requires, you know, having all the internal project that you don't see, that's really the iceberg is really having all the internal documentation, understanding of each feature work. So that's an engineer that's going to be based, you know, in San Francisco can be working for us, uh, and not, you know, requiring an, an onboarding call upon, on every, on every feature. And that, that's really what we're working on. And there is no other project, you know, direct booking is fine. That's for the engineer. For me, it's really recruiting, recruiting, recruiting and scaling the company forward and getting great managers and great leaders. So I think he was here on the call a bit earlier. It's not here now, but we had Jakub, uh, who is going to be bringing uh, 10 years of leadership experience on engineering and product, uh, on managing engineers. Uh, so that's going to be a very interesting move. I'm really, really looking forward to that. Uh, Matthew has been going superbly as a leader in the company, uh, to handle everything sarcastic about marketing and support. We've been onboarding like three, so how many people? Let's see, on the, on marketing, the past two months. I think in full-time equivalent, I think that's about five, uh, who's distributed across several, several agencies. So we're kind of working on all fronts about it. And when it takes time, obviously to work, uh, to. And when, it takes time obviously to work, to recruit people, great people, to onboard them and to get them to basically deliver the personal value. And everything that we're working on is basically getting, expecting those times to be, to be shorter and shorter. So the, the pricing, going back onto that, we may fix a problem into the perception. Because we see this is like the urban good, the more expensive it is, the better it is, right? And that we kind of don't, we kind of don't care at this point in time. We've already been growing our price by 37% in the past year. You don't even notice it. Before it was at $18 at the base price and now we increase it to 25. We didn't, we don't even need to change that to basically every past user because we can have full grandfathering of the pricing. Because the reality is that at this point in time, having more money would not solve a small problem. We need to be able to deploy the money as a, as a first step. And that would actually unlock for us to have more equipped engineering team, a great support team that's going to be able to not burn out on any, when there is a problem. And that's really what is, what is our core priority internally.
That, that sounds, my, my takeaway from that will be, the bottleneck is, is people and you're hiring leaders. And I can't agree with you more. Get the right leaders in place, everything will take care of itself. So thank you for the response, the transparency. And we got your back. We support you. Thanks for all you guys do.
And when that's the case.
Great, Derek. Thank you.
I'm glad that Noah and you get it. Basically at the end of the day, you're investing into your product. You're investing into product that you'd say you, you depend on it for your livelihood. I'm not sure you do, but I'm working out to make that one. So thank, thank you very much, Derek.
Thank you so much, Derek. So we have a few, I'm cautious of time, but I'm going to have to take a few more questions. So we have Casey, who was next?
Casey, hello, hello.
We'll circle back. Mike, Mike Ritten. Okay, we have Casey.
Okay, we have Casey and we'll have Mike soon. Okay, see, how can we help?
Casey, can you hear us?
I don't think we can hear you. It's not just me. It seems.
No, we're not able to hear you, Casey. You're back and you can just send a new request.
Okay, Casey, I think, yeah, you, there's something going on maybe with your, with your mic. Because you are expected to be, you're not muted, so it's okay. Okay. Yes.
We've got Mike on.
We got Mike on. Thank you very much, Mike. And we'll be taking Casey. If not, you can always ask a question again on Slido and on the hashtag hospitable to be asking your question. Please make sure to check the page later as I believe we will be asking, answering directly there. Mike, how can we help you?
Great. So, yeah, just want to make this pretty brief and quick. On the topic of cash, so we do have a handful of properties that we're, we're kind of new to this entire thing. We use some other platforms as well before coming to smart B and B, which is now hospitable, which, you know, we're 100% behind. We love the product. Can't wait for direct bookings and payments to be all handled through you guys. Question on that, as we're, the discussion's been on cash. So we do have, with our properties, we allow guests to book out into next year. We have reservations all the way out to 2023 as well. So with that, I know Airbnb, Verbo, they, from what I understand, they do charge those guests and they basically sit on that cash until the reservation is fulfilled or basically starts. My question is, so as moving forward, when obviously they, these guests can start booking directly and submitting payments directly through hospitable or Stripe, whatever the service may be, will the payout commence when that reservation, or I guess when that booking is completed? Or, or I guess is initiated? Or will the payout happen when the reservation happens, which could be months or years down the road?
Yeah. So you're interesting into that negative capital. So that's, that's something that's pretty interesting for Airbnb because they were able to kind of have built an edge fund to be able to manage this kind of, this kind of treasury. And I think for us, the answer is going to be a bit more nuanced. So as we explained in previous tunnels, we're going to have two modes or two offerings for direct bookings. When it's going to be basic, it's going to be the typical direct booking experience where you do everything yourself. We provide you with a direct booking website, with a calendar and booking engine. But it's going to be under your booking, under your Stripe account. You will have the opportunity to kind of build on top of more integrations such as auto host if you are a customer directly. You, but you will basically be the merchant of record. And in that case, I think the, what's going to, we will start basically with non-refundable policies. We start with non-refundable policies. So at this point in time, it basically makes no difference. You would basically see that transaction incoming directly in, in your, in your, in your Stripe account and then basically can get the payout then and there. So that's basically, if you want to have that answer, that's the way to make it work. But from what our objective is, is really to have an experience that's going to be closer to that of an OT and kind of providing a middle ground between a true naked direct booking website that you can have currently on any kind of alternative and an OT experience that's going to charge very high fees, especially because they have the, the cost of marketing. For us, what we want is kind of finding that middle ground where we are, will be the merchant of record, which allows us to offer multiple payment methods beyond what Stripe can offer. We are liable for any kind of child back, which we believe is a very big blocker for some users to go, to go to a, to a direct booking website. And we are basically working natively with auto host to verify guests. We, under that premium offering, hospitable will ensure that we verify the guests. We verify the ID, we verify the selfie, we verify the name of our guest. We verify if they are basically, if there is any kind of intergarding location that is not according to your business rules. And we'll also be offering an insurance of up to $1.3 million for damage caused to the property on top of $100,000 of, to the, to the guest. So more like ensuring the, the risk on the, the guest side. So that's basically a middle ground where we'll be charging an extra, an extra fee to the guest directly. So at no extra cost obviously to the host. So we'd be offering those kind of alternatives and I believe that allows us to deliver a direct booking, direct booking website to a larger audience that's probably more aligned with our customers that manage fewer than five properties and don't have the time to kind of do the entire integration workflows, et cetera, for, for, for themselves. So that would be my, my answer. Now, in this, in the second case, I think that is a question that we're asking ourselves today. Is really, how exactly will the payout flow work? That's not something that's currently is timing because I believe there are some regulations around it. It's going to, what, what I believe is something that would be interesting for us is that we are half European, half American as a, as a company. And so we, we basically can have multiple merchant accounts that allows us to acquire payments with less risk of non-payment. And that, that's actually something that I'm really looking forward to explore is really the payment optimization side of it. To ensure that we can have a more efficient pricing for, for the guest as well. And I think that's good for, for everyone. So that's, that's basically what's, what's happening. So I, I don't know exactly what you would be using because I do believe that each has its kind of advantages. Each offering has kind of advantages. If you want to get paid the moment the guest is charged, will be able to do so if you have a non, a non-refundable cancellation policy. Mike, you still here?
Question, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah. So here, yeah, appreciated the feedback and excited for direct bookings and everything to be fully up and operational. So appreciate it and yeah, thanks for all you guys' hard work.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mike.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have time for a few more. David. Hello, David.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Perfectly, yes, please.
Awesome. So I just joined, maybe about five minutes ago, my friend Claudia who's down there, she sent me the link. I'm a big fan of your guys' software and I, and I probably missed the answer. I just kind of wanted to ask. What's the timeframe that you guys think before we can have direct bookings through the system?
I can give you, yeah, I, I don't think we're at the level where we want to kind of come into a timeframe. I think we're still basically assessing what is the fastest, fastest path to, to make it happen. And so that's basically, we would love to have a version that can process the payments on, on, by the end of January. But that's really depending on everything else doing, being fine. And like for example, Airbnb or maintenance of the product, as it happened today. However, the, the full booking engine experience is a little bit more than just that. There are basically some, some terms of use, there's some legal component. There is a cancellation policies. There are some house rules that you want to have at there. So all those kind of bits and pieces are going to be iterated upon, I think, a little bit, a little bit later. So that's basically some, some elements of response. But hey, check in here on those tunnels every two weeks where we basically report on that. Definitely this question is a favorite for, for everyone and we would, I would love to be able to tell you just tomorrow. And you know what?
No, I get it.
I would tell you, yeah, it's been delayed tomorrow. It's going to be the next day. Okay, Angela, I'm, I'm sorry. I would, I think I would have to, we'd have to stop here. Thank you to everyone that's been raising there. And if you want to ask a question directly, you can send me an email to pc@hospitable.com and I may try and do my best to kind of answer that relatively shortly. So thank you. Thank you very much for, for attending. Thank you very much for all your, for all, for your questions. And we'll be, when are we going to have the next one, Angela?
11th of January, 12th of January, sorry.
The 12th of January, yes. That's going to be the next one, the 12th of January. We'll be wishing you a very happy new year.
We'll share the link. The recording will be shared after this. Again, just reminder, if you haven't had a chance to ask your question, please submit it through slido.com, hashtag hospitable and we will get you an answer as quickly as possible.